What's the name of this, what's ERG is that for? Oh, pride, okay. They should put their name on that thing. Okay, so we're gonna try that again. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Akron Public Schools on 23 August 2021. We want to thank everyone for being here today, especially for our adjusted time. And so we want to thank you for being here, and we're gonna start with our roll call. Mr. Pendleton.
Dr. Akbar.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Mr. Bravo.
Present.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all those viewing online as well. I wanted to just start by saying this afternoon, we welcome our ELIT CLC Naval, our JRLTC Color Guard to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and so we ask that you please stand as we have the Color Guard present us our colors. We will start the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Colors. Reds.
President Ackbar, Superintendent Paul Mac, members of the board, yes. My name is Lionel Erkert, and I'm a retired Colonel from the United States Marine Corps. I'm also the Senior Naval Science Instructor at ELIT Community Learning Center. For those who are not familiar with JRLTC, it's a collective program. It's designed to build those citizens and give students options at graduation. If you take a look at portrait of graduate designed by our public schools, all the traits we're trying to instill in students are taught by our program. So I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to be here, I appreciate it. I also wanted to let you know that the support from the current and the rest of the faculty and teachers is phenomenal at our school.
Thank you.
Any more members, yes? I'm a recruit of the United States Navy, retired, and what Colonel said. However, I've been at the Marine Corps for 11 years, at the Naval Corps for 15 years. I love myself because of those, and I'm glad that I'm here.
Hello, my name is Seth Young, I'm the Cadet Executive Officer at ELIT CLC. My job is the Cadet Executive Officer, is to manage the staff. I'm a junior in ELIT, and after high school, I plan on commissioning to the United States Navy as a naval officer and become a naval architect.
Hello, I'm Ethan Wilhong, I'm a senior at ELIT CLC, and I'm the Cadet Administrative Officer. I keep track of people who have been at our accomplishments and help them get the ribbons and likes. And after high school, I'll be a naval administrator.
Hello, I am Carlo Beck, I am the Assistant Administrative Officer, and after high school, I want to be a veterinarian.
Hi, my name is Genaes Colter, I'm a sophomore at ELIT High School, and my job is one of the various officers, which my job is to support the ELIT CLC. And after high school, I will be a military admiral.
Thank you very much for joining us today. It's always good to see JRLTC or anyone associated with the military or those who are in the program JRLTC. I'm a former JRLTC cadet myself, former battalion commander, former cadet lieutenant colonel, so, as well as an actual Army veteran. So it's always good to see people like you in this program. It builds resilience, it builds tenacity, as well as the courage to move forward with all of your goals and achieve your dreams. So thank you for being in the program and all that you do. So on behalf of our board, I want to thank you, to our staff for the ELIT program, as well as our cadets. We want to thank you for being here today. The Color Guard and presenting the colors at our Akron School Board meetings have been happening since 2013. The idea was created by the program's Public Affairs Officer to build an understanding of the JRLTC program, enhance summer board meetings. The board wishes to thank Joseph Greco, as well as First Class Petty Officer, United States Army Retired. Officer, Petty Officer Greco is the Naval Science Instructor at ELIT CLC. Thank you for joining us, we're also here, we're also joined by the retired Lieutenant Colonel as well. And I forgot to add that this program wouldn't have been as great of a success since its inception by one cadet. Her name is Angel Harris. One missing, a single Color Guard, only missing one single Color Guard board meeting from her freshman year to her senior year. And that meeting was when she was enlisting in the Army in Cleveland. So we want to thank you for being here, and thank you everyone, so congratulations. Thank you, you may be seated. Kinda takes me back to high school. So that was very fun, and we're gonna move to the rest of the board meeting. I want to first just say thank you to everyone who's here. Again, I did announce that we are meeting an hour earlier than normal, and because of that, we want to be good stewards of the community and the public. And so we'll pause at a few moments throughout our meeting to see if anyone else who wanted to address the board is here, so that we can give other people that opportunity as well. And so with that being said, we will start with our community and school reflections from our board. Anyone has any community and school reflections? Mrs. Mansfield.
Just a few things that it's been...
Can you make sure you turn your mic on?
No, I'm sorry, last time they were on. Busy couple of weeks with everything gearing up for the start of school. I wanted to give extra special thanks to the Elementary Master Planning Committee that met, and being able to be a fly on the wall in that and watch and listen as that committee was meeting was inspiring, really exciting. The United Way Lunch, and I know several of us attended, big thanks to Jim Mullins, his team, for all of their support. And we can't do what we do without them. College and Career Academies wouldn't be what it is without United Way. The bold goals and all the things that they're doing are just amazing. Wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Akbar and Christine Fowler Mack for her presentation and their presentations to the Akron Chamber. That was a great way to start the other morning, thank you very much, it was really exciting to listen. Let's see, Adam Mader is one of my favorite humans, and I wanted to acknowledge the article that was in yesterday's Beacon Journal about the teaching of racial equity and diversity, equity, inclusion in Akron Public Schools, and how that differs from what people think that we're teaching and the hubbub, let's say, about critical race theory around the country. Thoroughly enjoyed the Akron Roundtable event at the Akron Civic Theater, it was in person. Two former Akron Public School graduates were highlighted speakers in arts in our community, and they did a fantastic job not only representing our schools, but our city, and what it means to be a working, living, breathing, Black Akron artist. And then I just wanted to express my excitement for the kindergartners moving into Essex Elementary School from the north side as a former Harris Elementary student, and my grandmother went to Harris. Having the kindergartners move in next door to my house is very exciting, it just kinda feels like a full circle moment. Half of that building has been used for the preschool for the last couple of years, and that was such a joy to have them move in. But the addition of those folks next door is, you can feel the energy change in the neighborhood already, so they are welcome. I talked to councilperson, Shamus Malik, this morning, and we talked about how excited we are and how much we want to welcome those families and students to Essex, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mansfield, anyone else?
Oh, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. Just want to give a shout out to the ERG for the LGBTQ folks are going to be marching, and allies are gonna be marching in the Pride Parade this Saturday, and that's what these shirts are. So if you see these shirts, come join us, say hello, and just a huge shout out to that group because they are amazing. And please join us, the pride, a lot of us will be working or volunteering there, and come say hello.
Thank you very much, and I was saying earlier, it'd be nice if their name was on those shirts, so we can celebrate them and their existence as well. ERG's Employee Resource Groups is an outstanding organization, or organizations, that build, you know, the climate at the, you know, in the organization. So we're really proud to have quite a bit of them already up and running and to a great start. So thank you, Mrs. Mansfield, for recognizing that, anyone else? Dr. Hall.
What she said, and I would just add one thing. So, you know, we live in tumultuous times, and I know that there's been quite a bit of consternation amongst some of our community regarding the profit of their students wearing a mask. And so I spent last week talking to a number of parents that reached out, and just want to commend them because whether we agreed or not in our conversations, the people I talked with were very professional and polite in their remarks. And so I just want to say publicly that I really wholeheartedly appreciate the rational discourse that we were able to engage in. And there were some folks that in the end, we didn't still, we still didn't agree. But again, I appreciate, I think that's what our community is about, is about the rational, about respectful rational discourse. And so I just want to thank those folks publicly for allowing us all to be able to engage in that. And I also say that, also to say that I hope that as others who may disagree with some of our decisions around this come forward, that they also will model that same behavior, professional and collegial behavior, as they approach members of our senior staff, as well as teachers in classroom, as well as members of the board, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and I don't usually say something after every comment, but I did, I did want to actually say how beneficial it has been to have Dr. Hall as a healthcare executive and Diana Autry as a registered nurse, who are experiencing this pandemic on another way than the rest of us, to really educate us throughout this process. I've learned so much from both of them specifically, and obviously also Deb Folk, we can't forget about her. She's educated us on bussing and the spray things and all the other things that we need to do. I just wanted to just publicly acknowledge, just for the community, how beneficial it is to have that lens on the board at this time. Anyone else? Wow, this is a quiet bunch today, so thank you very much. That concludes our community and school reflections from our board members. Next, we'll move to requests to address the board. We have two that we know of, I don't know if there are any others. Okay, so again, we will pause a few points in the meeting to just see if there's anyone else here who wants to address the board, because we did change our meeting time. We do have Vanita Winston here, she, okay. If you could take the podium here, you have three minutes to speak on the topic. We ask that you, if you have any grievances with our staff, or a personal issue, or anything that mentions a specific student situation, if you could save those and let us know, we can do an executive session for those, that item. So you have three minutes, and thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for your time, I never thought I would ever come to a meeting. I do support you all, I love Akron Public Schools, I went to Akron Public Schools, I have seven children in the school system. I really just have two questions. I have two children that go to Miller South, one has severe asthma all her life, one doesn't. Miller South explained to me if she didn't come back to school in person, she couldn't go there anymore. And it's like she worked so hard for that, she's, you know, that's all her hard work. My question is, is there anything else we can do with asthmatic children like that? And do you guys think it's safe enough for asthmatic children? You know, in the world, children don't get the love and appreciation that they need from the world. It's about everybody else, and we're grown, and we've already lived our life and made our paths. But for me, it's like, I can't not send her, but if I send her and something happens, as a parent, you're gonna feel like you sent your child to the fire. So I'm just terrified, and I don't know what to do. And that's all I'm here for.
Well, first I want to say thank you for being here. Our, this might sound very trite, and I hope you don't take it that way. We typically don't provide responses during our meeting, but I will say that I appreciate you being here, and that's a very important issue that you raised. I'm going to ask our superintendent Christine Fowler Mack to please get back with you if you want to leave your contact information, and I'll ask that she personally contact you to talk about that matter. Thank you very much. You can leave it with, yep, thank you. Thank you very much, very important issue. Next, we have Pastor Gregory Harrison here, and same spiel, I'm not gonna say it again because you heard it, but same spiel as Mrs. Winston. Thank you for being here.
I'll ask Mr. President, if you can indulge me, I'll try to stay within three minutes, but I want to give you some context to the folder that was passed out. Want to thank you for the opportunity to address the board. For those board members, I brought a folder with some photographs. The photograph is Ramos Lewis. Ramos Lewis was a 15-year-old child who shot and killed my godson on August 29th, 2013. The photos that you see, August 29th was the first day of school. Ramos Lewis could not read. He was 15 and could not read at all. He could not read enough to write his middle name. Declaring racism a public health crisis demands that drastic action is taken. Declaring racism a public health crisis means that we recognize that we have some work to do. Ramos was one of four people who were charged, arrested, convicted for killing. Ramos Lewis didn't have a chance. He did not have a chance. Paris, my godson, did not have a chance. He went to Arlington Christian Academy for eight years, went to Kaiga Falls, but he wanted to come to Akron Public Schools to play football. He came to Akron Public Schools. Do we need another report? Do we need another task force? Do we need someone else to tell us that we are in trouble? Do we need anyone else to tell us why the violence in our neighborhoods is happening? It's happening because our children cannot read. It's happening because our children do not have the structure to deal with adversity in a way other than violence. Do we need community partners to tell the school board how to run the schools? If the schools could fix themselves, they would have done it. They can't. We need a radical change. I continue to hear the school board is getting in the weeds. We need you in the weeds. We need you to get in the weeds. We need every decision, every policy to be looked at, to be scrutinized, and not just about equity, but is there justice in it? How are we educating kids to prison? How can a 15-year-old not read enough to write his name? He is serving 36 years because we couldn't educate him in 10. Racism a public health crisis, healthcare. African-Americans are still dying for it one. Bold gold initiatives. Our kids still can't read. Elevate Akron. Not all of Akron is being elevated. Is there enough information to do a radical change? Or do we need another task force? Do we need another study group? I would ask you, as I close, to look at the picture of Ramos Lewis smoking a blunt. Look at the child next to him. That's what he knows. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pastor Harrison, we appreciate you always being willing to come before our meeting, and in this case, share some tough realities, so thank you very much. We now move to the approval of the previous meeting minutes. And so we have August 9th, 2021, meeting minutes to approve, is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. Mansfield and seconded by Mr. Alexander to approve the previous meeting minutes from 9 August 2021. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick.
Yes.
Dr. Akbar.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, we will have super, I'm sorry, we will have the personnel recommendations, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar, and good evening, members of the board and to the community. Tonight, of course, prior to your consideration and approval of the personnel recommendations, Director McVeigh is going to make some important introductions.
Good evening. Tonight, in your board recommendations, but who is not here is Alyssa Brightenthal. She's a graduate of the University of Akron with a degree in early childhood education, and started working for Akron Public Schools in August of 2009 at Garfield High School as an intervention specialist. After leaving Garfield, she worked in the elementary setting at Betty Jane and Ritzman Elementary Schools for a short time. In 2012, she started working at STEM High School. She went back to school at the University of Akron for the Master's Program of Education and Administration. And in 2014, she earned her degree and principal license in K-12. She has served on numerous leadership committees while at STEM High School, including the SIP team, Ready High School Network, and serving the roles of senior advisor and student council advisor. And tonight, she's in, being recommended as the leader of campus support for ELIT CLC, or ELIT High School. All right, next, Javon, if you could come up, please. I'd like to introduce tonight, Ms. Javon Allen. She's in her 20th year as an educator. She has a bachelor's degree in elementary education from the University of Akron, a master's degree in educational leadership, a master's degree in curriculum and instruction, and a superintendent license, all from Ashland University. She began her teaching career, teaching fourth and fifth grade, for seven years. After leading, leaving the classroom to pursue leadership opportunities, she was fortunate to serve as an elementary principal for five years. As Javon furthered her career, she also held positions as a curriculum and instruction specialist and director of curriculum. In her most recent position, she serves as the Education Department Head and Program Coordinator for Community College in Lewisville, Kentucky. Javon and her husband have recently returned to northeast Ohio, where they reside in Cleveland with their adorable fur baby Bentley. She enjoys reading, traveling, yoga, scrapbooking, gardening, and spending time with her family. Tonight, we are recommending her for a Dean of Students position, and she'll be assigned to Windermere CLC.
Good evening, everyone, I am Javon Smith Allen. I'm gonna be very brief today, I just want to say thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity, I am very excited. One thing that I do want to say is, during my short time of interacting with my now colleagues here in Akron, everyone has been so welcoming, so wonderful, and so helpful, so I am really looking forward to getting started. Thank you very much for your time.
You could have, back your, have your seat now, please. All right, Kevin. I'd like to introduce Mr. Kevin Hogan. He earned his undergrad degree in health education and phys ed from Baldwin Wallace University. He received his master's degree in teaching and learning from Nova Southeastern University. In the winter of 2020, Kevin completed the Inspired Leadership Program at Cleveland State University and earned his administrative license in January of 2021. He has spent the last 13 years teaching health, phys ed, and adapted phys ed within the Vermillion Local School District. He has also coached football, wrestling, and baseball at the JV and varsity levels. Tonight, we are recommending him to be a Dean of Students for Harris Jackson CLC.
Good evening and thank you. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity to let everybody in this room know that the people at Harris Jackson are doing a wonderful job with the tasks they've been handed, and they've been wonderful to me. My resume is not as impressive as the young lady who went before me, but one day, I hope it is. I'm just really excited to start my administrative career in Akron Public Schools, thank you.
Thank you, Director McVeigh, and now I wish to recommend approval of the personnel recommendations in categories five through 16.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the personnel recommendations from Madam Superintendent?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Bravo, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mrs. McKittrick, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Mr. Su, I'm sorry, Mr. Pendleton.
Ms. Autry.
Abstain from 13.4, otherwise, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Dr. Hall.
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have resolutions and motions on the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, Dr. Akbar, I wish to recommend the approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category 21. They are in proper format, and I move for their approval.
Thank you very much. Any, is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. Mansfield.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hall. Any discussion? Mrs. Mansfield.
Just wanted to, you know, we had a couple of these go through last time, too. Some of our teachers write amazing grants, and our schools write amazing grants that not only are the lessons inspiring, but also the money that it saves the community and the enrichment that it gives our students. So, I just wanted to just point out that there's more.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Roll call vote, Mr. Pendleton.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have business affairs recommendations. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I wish to recommend the approval of the business affairs recommendations presented in category 23. They are in proper format. I move for their approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. A roll call vote, please.
Dr. Hall?
Abstained from item 23.7, but yes otherwise.
Thank you. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now will take a brief pause. I haven't seen anyone come in yet, but we'll ask if there's anyone else here who would like to come before the board. Okay, thank you very much. We will now move to Superintendent's report.
Thank you. As Board Member Mansfield said, and I think seconded by Dr. Hall, it's been a busy, but, but good week. And first of all, before I get into my formal report, I just want to say it was, it was great to be in the presence of students today. And so, that really gives us a boost of energy. So, it was really nice to have the Ellet CLC scholars and cadets here with us. It puts the reason for what we do right in front of our eyes. But other than our students today, our educators are back. So, today marks the formal day in which our educators, our school-based educators are back in the buildings. And it was a hot one at that. They will be experiencing this week a full week of collaboration time as a way to really transition back into in-person learning post our pandemic. During that time, they will have time for planning, training, vertical meetings to really prepare those teacher who are receiving the students that they had last year, and to also gain information so that they are prepared to meet our students' academic, social, emotional needs as we transition into the new year. Today, they heard an opening message from students, staff, and myself to launch off this year with a focus on our APS spirit. So, we are APS proud. And we started today with a message and with some hashtag social media work that reminded us that we are stronger together. And so, you might, if you are ones that do use social media, hopefully, you will look for pictures of our staff members together with their teams, celebrating the fact that our strength is when we come together on behalf of our children. Throughout the week, elementary faculty in particular will be spending one full day out at an essential experience location, such as the art museum, the Akron Zoo, the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, Hill Farm, the Akron Children's Museum. They will be doing that as a part of their experience to then collaborate with partners that often work with our children and to get ready for how to integrate those resources and opportunities into their lessons as they think about the year ahead. Also throughout the week, the school improvement teams are hosting their own trainings. And so, for staff on topics that will help them implement their 90-day improvement plans even more effectively. There are also over 100 conference-style sessions happening throughout the district this week. Things such as Makerspaces, how to create strong Makerspaces, information about social, emotional learning, advanced Google training. So, for those of you who might want to know a bit more, faculty and staff will be prepared to assist. Reading and mathematics strategies, faculty self-care, because we not only are equipping them to work with students, but really encouraging that they take care of themselves, because last year was not only challenging on students, but also on faculty and staff as they not only cared for the children of our community, but also cared for families and things of that nature at home. So, this is a wonderful week where our faculty, they are back. They are smiling, they are energetic, they are ready to welcome our students and families the following week. As well, today was a special day in that we did have a meeting with the kindergarten families of the Harris Jackson community to talk about the Harris Jackson Learning Annex that we are planning for our kindergarten students, where they will join preschoolers over at Essex Schools. So, myself and many members of our senior team went over, and we met with, with those families at 3:00 today. Families had the opportunity to hear about our plans for them and their students and to be able to ask questions and/or explore even further supports. Families will have another opportunity beyond today if they weren't able to attend or if they just want to come to hear more on the 30th. So, there will be another open house session that will be held at the Learning Annex. And so, they will be able to have transportation, to take them over, to tour the classrooms, to meet with the teachers, to be able to see the buses and to meet staff that will drive those buses. So, they, they should feel really familiar with what their, what their students will experience prior to school beginning. I want to give extra special kudos to all of our senior team that really was very, very thoughtful in thinking this through, first and foremost, from the lens of students and their experience, but also thinking it through from the parent's hat and thinking about what supports and information parents would need. And, and they really attended to that well and continue to, to do that. So, hopefully, if you all have an opportunity, board members, you too will be able to stop by our Learning Annex and to see the environment that has been created and the wonderful ways in which our faculty and staff are being responsive to our families. The kindergarten teachers were there tonight. So, if any parent did attend this evening, all six of those kindergarten teachers were present. And what an energetic bunch. So, I, I couldn't think of a, a better team. I think their, their T-shirts had something about the dynamic team they are. But they, they themselves will really set persons at ease. And then, this is a temporary solution while we do the longer-range planning together with you, through you, and with, with the community at large. Our kindergarten enrollment, I'm pleased to say, is continuing to increase. That was one of the areas, you know, nationally, and then also here in Akron, that we've been monitoring very closely, because last year, many families chose to have their students remain at home rather than to have them engage in a remote learning experience. But this year, which is what prompted us to plan for the annex, citywide, our numbers are starting to tick up. And so, students are returning, which is a wonderful challenge to have. And then, especially in that North Hill Cluster and at Harris Jackson in particular, the families are enrolling. And so, we will keep you posted on, on those numbers. Other than that, we continue to plan diligently around the safety protocols that must be in place. As you noticed, today at the board meeting, we are back throughout the entire building wearing masks. And so, in some of our facilities that did not house students on a day-to-day basis, we were not wearing the mask. But as of last week, consistent with the uptick of the data in this city, we did issue a mandate at our, these buildings as well, that in all of the facilities throughout the school system that we do exercise safety precautions, including social distancing and wearing masks. And we will continue to monitor that very closely. As more and more people come back into the system, we are also starting to see some levels of outbreak of COVID in some of the buildings. And so, we do know our reporting systems are working well, but it just continues to remind us of the needs to exercise safety precautions to not only ensure our personal safety, but the safety of those with whom we live and go back home to at the end of the day. On a positive way, if you saw the newspaper last week, you may have seen the article that spoke about the fact that our buses now have installed within them sanitation misters where they are being sanitized in the evenings. And that is the first, I believe, in Ohio. And so, kudos to our team there in the Transportation Division and the Division of Business Affairs for being creative and proactive and to making sure that not only our facilities, but our transportation services remain very, very safe. So, we, we excited that next week, we will welcome back students more broadly. But we are, we are up and running. Teachers are back, and we're ready to go. So, that, that's my report this evening.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. Are there any questions?
Yes, I actually have a very important question. Can I get one of those misters from my car? Yes. Roger. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, just, just had to check.
Any questions for Madam Superintendent? Okay. Hearing none. Thank you very much. I could probably roll this into my report, but it's related to your, your, your statement around the mask. You know, we've received quite a few individuals sending emails or even calling about mask mandates. And as Madam Superintendent mentioned, you know, there are, you know, even without the children in our buildings, you know, we are seeing some spread already in some of our buildings. And this is not a situation that we all wanted to be in. I mean, we never wanted this from the very beginning. Well, I hope no one did. And so, we are adjusting in order to save and protect everyone involved. What we do in our schools will matter for the entire community. And so, we are, I just wanted to take this time to really thank the superintendent for the mask mandate, but on top of that, to ask all of our staff and parents and families and students to be very vigilant about wearing your mask, about sanitizing your hands as often, because we want to do what we can, all of us play a role in defeating this menace so we can get back to not wearing masks, so we can get back to hugging our grandmothers, to running around on the playground without any thought of getting too close to someone. For that energetic kindergarten teacher to give each and every one of their children a hug, which is, I'm sure, probably breaking their hearts that they can't do it. That's probably innate to their nature and who they are. So, it just takes one, all of us. And so, I just wanted to just put that out there and just share that we, we are not over. This is not over, unfortunately. We have not reached the other side. Unfortunately, it's getting worse again. And it just is another point that we have to remain vigilant and do our part. Each and every one of us play a part in, in, in this process to protect the other person. So, thank you for that moment and elaborating on that point. And so, with that being said, we're moving to the President's report and just have a few things to, to share. Today, the board will be meeting an executive session with our superintendent to finalize and set the goals for the year. So, that's something that we'll be working on. And we have recently met with some business leaders in the community to, to share the vision of, of this board with advanced APS and our three-in-three plan and, and really giving our superintendent the opportunity to introduce herself as well to our stakeholders. So, we had two opportunities to do that. Dr. Hall and I and Madam Superintendent met with a group of healthcare and energy leaders maybe two weeks ago. And then, we also met with the board from the chamber last week as well. So, we're doing what we can to just share with everyone the vision of the board and advanced APS and elevating the great work that we're doing while also acknowledging the work that we still have yet to embark on. And so, just wanted to share that and appreciate that. And thank you, Mrs. Mansfield, for mentioning that. And then, as Madam Superintendent said, we are welcoming our staff back and our students back next week. So, each and every one of us on the board, hopefully, is trying to figure out how we can do our welcome-back events or setting up our welcome-back visits for the schools in our clusters. So, please, if you haven't responded to Ruth, if you could do that soon. And I know I'm one of those people that have to figure out my schedule and my life as well to get that taken care of. But I think it's important that we do that. The, the next thing is, I started a conversation with Senator Seitz about the cadence of having legislative updates, which also leads to another thing. As we know, that there's a few bills on the table that may impact or may not impact us. And so, we'll be trying to work another conversation around our legislative update sometime early this fall, probably October. So, I wanted to put that out there to share with you. And that leads me to the article that Mrs. Mansfield mentioned in the paper yesterday around critical race theory and this debate about it being taught in our schools. I think our staff member, Adam Modder, did a great job sharing that it's not taught in our schools. And in fact, it's not even taught at the undergraduate level in college. And so, it's an advanced, complicated study, I'm sorry, theory that has five tenants, and that is not any of the things that people are saying it is. And so, just trying to, you know, not be distracted by that type of debate. But I want- But I want everyone to know that this board has made, it is our mission to continue to ensure that every student, no matter where they come from, who their parent is, or what background they come to us from, that they come to our schools and they are affirmed for who they are and that we see them for the strengths that they bring to our classroom and to our community and that we're doing all we can to ensure that is what we are focused on. So hopefully, everyone, if you had a chance to read that article, if you haven't, please do. Hopefully, I made us all proud because it's really a sensitive subject for me because, one, it's, you know, we teach it at the college level in graduate courses. But, two, because a lot of our work on focusing on ensuring that every child gets what they need also means that they have to see themselves and their perspectives in the curriculum and what we teach. So I think that's important. And I think we'll continue to do our work. And I want to thank everyone on this board for being committed to that and also the staff for what they do as well. So with that being said, that concludes my report. Are there any questions, Mrs. Mansfield?
I forgot to say when I was trying to keep my remarks short, I really loved the part where you were quoted or captured saying that it's heart work, not just hard work. And I really, when I was reading that yesterday, it just, it just really struck me because that is exactly, that encapsulates a lot of what we do, but especially that work. And so I just wanted to give kudos to you for that because I thought that really encapsulated a lot of how we feel. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Any other? Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much. We move to treasurer's report. How's those numbers looking?
Those numbers, let me tell you. Thank you, Mr. President. Three items to report on tonight. One is legislative, quick update there. Two is the American Rescue Plan. I'll share that on the screen. And then the third is, as promised, we're going to highlight our monthly financial report here, try every board meeting or as needed. So quickly, the legislative update has to do with Fair School Funding Plan. Just when you thought I wasn't going to report on that anymore. The CUP Patterson or School Funding Work Group 2.0 convened last week with the intention of staying ahead of the next biennium. And so what the ultimate purpose and goal is, is to fully fund and fully phase in the Fair School Funding Plan as originally adopted with that six-year phase-in. So we begun those meetings. And thankfully, most of our team members are staying intact with a few extra and additional ones. And the extra and additional ones may be up to and including you. So there's a concerted effort around the state of Ohio to do what's called a Heart and Souls Campaign. And that's to get our legislators in our buildings and classrooms. And one thing that resonated so well with the legislators in our education voice is that we did speak with one voice. Six hundred and nine school districts across Ohio, but we did speak with one voice. And we want to build upon that. We'll keep you updated as our CUP Patterson Work Group 2.0 convenes. The second is a resolution in the consent. It's up on the screen. I don't usually highlight specific resolutions, but I do want to highlight this one. The American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or ESR. And this resolution, 21.5, is our appropriations resolution for the next three years. And to highlight, it is $95.3 million. It's the largest allocation of our ARP and ESR funds. We did discuss this at length in Finance Committee, which I know Finance Committee members might talk about a little bit more. But I just want to talk about a little bit of the requirements, rigor, rules, responsibilities that we have with these funds and the level of care that they go through. So the first is, by statute, one of the board's primary responsibilities that starts at the very top is to allocate funds. And the appropriation resolution really doesn't even start with the treasurer and statute. It starts with the board. So once that authorization starts a process, that process looks like board authorization, fund establishment. I know it's lost there, but it says Fund 507. And that allows for the school district to track those funds separately as required by law. We report that to not only the federal government, but the state of Ohio. And then what are the other mechanisms included in the reporting? One is a monthly report out through board meetings and finance committees, finance committee meetings. But we also have the Summit County Budget Commission and annual audit. So we just want to stress and highlight the amazing opportunity and responsibility that we have with these funds. So I wanted to highlight that resolution. And then the third and final component of my report tonight should be up on the screen, and I don't know why things aren't working, is the finance report boiled down. If there's one page that you're going to look at, I think it's page three there. It's year-to-date collections, year-to-date expenditures, the potential impact. And if you are a visual learner like I am, in the center of the page, where you see the variance to cash balance, you see our prior year in the gray chart and you see the actual and estimated in the blue with trends. So I do want to highlight, and apologize for ending on the busy spreadsheet, but we're a little bit required to do this. If you see in the top, financial forecast back to November of 2020, you can see that deficit line item in the middle where it says revenue surplus or deficit. And it's basically whether or not we're balancing our checkbook. And we all know that you might be spending more than you're taking in, right? But that still means that you might have some cash on the books. In November of 2020, so we're just now into the heart of the pandemic for schools and virtual operations, starting to see some of the positive cash trends as it results of that. But if you fast forward to the end of the year, which is really what I just kind of want to go on record and we did in the Finance Committee, is the bottom chart, June of 2021, you see the impact of being virtual learning, the under-budget scenario, and then the impact of some of those S or 1 and 2 dollars of where we stand. And again, if I, it's really not the cash balance or the bottom line that's the important part. It is that revenue surplus or deficit, whether or not we're deficit or balancing our budget. We've been able to push that off. So I draw your attention to that as Finance Committee will be reviewing this monthly now. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pendleton. Any questions or discussion for the treasurer? Dr. Hall?
Yeah, I just had a comment. So, you know, as we think about that $95 million, right? I mean, there are some who would say that's a lot of money. And there are someone that would say that we have a number of needs that could eat that up fairly quickly, right? I mean, so I think it's important to keep that in perspective. You know, that it's not as much money as you think it is. And then as I think about, you know, how we end up spending this money ultimately as an organization, right, as a board, senior staff, et cetera, you know, I think that, and some of us have already gotten communication around about how do we partner in soliciting feedback in how we spend that money, right? And how transparent are we going to be in our decision-making process in how we spend those funds as well? So I just, it is my sincere hope and expectation that we all will be inclusive and transparent with our key partners in thinking about how we spend this money and what we spend it on. So, but I thank you for your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
And I have one question, if no one else has a question. So in your projections, you give this kind of a picture of where we are by 2025. But it has a note there that says, you know, considering a renewal, a levy renewal. So can you just talk to us about, at what point are you projecting levy renewal into this picture?
Certainly. So the academic study of whether or not to go on the ballot is usually triggered by a deficit. And while that timing is one of the community and board, superintendent, and all the plans that go into that, the trigger for that, in fact, we did discuss in some length the cash reserve policy that I think the charge from Mr. Bravo is that it's probably time to revisit that cash reserve policy again and to refresh it. It says, and it's one of the only shaws in a policy like that, but it basically is authorizing the treasurer, reporting the treasurer shall report to the board when that deficit begins. And so the academic study of when you go for a ballot would be in a deficit. That's why I drew your attention to, we were levy imminent prior to COVID, right? Where we had significant deficit spend, as you see in that top chart, and a cash reserve that was below 10% of our annual budget, right? And we can, I think we even have some slides in our detailed review about how many days cash on hand we have. And it was far less than 90, approaching 60, some of that. So we are not levy imminent at this point. And while the forecast can and will change, it will likely improve from here. So for the foreseeable future, no. And so if you look out that fifth year in June of 2021 where it says the million-dollar deficit, we still have a cash reserve policy that would be a requirement of about $35 million. And instead, we're looking at a cash balance of about $135 million. So that's not to say we won't discuss it and keep our eye on the ball monthly here because if you would have told me 18 months ago that our forecast would look like this following a levy imminent scenario, not only for us, but many school districts, there's been a lot to change. And we want to capture all of those expenses, programs, opportunities that we have. And I don't know that we have yet. I really don't know that we have properly budgeted for that until those formal plans are, and I think we've got a nice report that the superintendent set out a few board meetings that will follow that. And we'll need every bit of that time to plan and allocate those funds, so.
Dr. Hall?
So, yeah, I would echo some of the conveyed sentiments from Dr. Hall and as well as from Mr. Bravo in our Finance Committee meeting, I think it was last week, about the cash reserve policy. I definitely think that should be something that we prioritize. You know, because, you know, to your earlier point, when we first came on, you know, this board, we were, as you mentioned, we were levy imminent. And one of the things that I had a hard time understanding, you know, and I'll confess, obviously, not working in education, you know, as it didn't make a lot of sense to me that you wait till you have a deficit before you ask for more assistance, you know. You know, my pop always kept saying, you say, Derek, you know, you can't make sense out of nonsense. And to me, that just sounded like nonsense, that we would wait till we're running a deficit to ask for more funding. So, you know, to me, like, I appreciate your comments that levy is not imminent and certainly would agree with you, obviously. You know, but as we start to look a couple of years out, I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm not a proponent of waiting till we're in deficit territory to start talking about a levy again. I think there's a balance there. I would agree with you that we don't need to do it right now. But I don't know that, you know, that as an individual board member, that I would be a fan of an approach where you would wait till we're running a deficit before we start to have that conversation again. So that's just, because I think about education in general. I think if there's anything that we should, that the community should support there being a surplus, it should be the community's public education system. You know, and so, you know, let's not be stingy with regard to that. So I'm soapboxing, I'll stop doing that. But I just wanted to get that off my chest. So I feel better now that I've said all that. So, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Just one final point. Based off what I, and again, I'm probably, I'm not a finance person. So this could be a misread of the report. But based on what I'm seeing is we'll start deficit spending in really 2024 and then become in the red in 2025. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Your first comment there, the deficit spend, you're correct. Well, happens according to our June, again, this is likely to change. But somewhere between fiscal '24 and '25, we'll start the deficit spend. That's accurate statement. The cash balance there is at that bottom where it says ending balance with renewal levies, $134 million. We won't be in the red. We will have a healthy cash balance as predicted right now.
Okay. So I guess my last question is, I don't, and I'm sorry I missed the finance meeting, so you probably talked about this. I don't understand the note about with renewal levies. What is that? And I, maybe I'm not asking it correctly. But to me, when I read that, that's saying that we're projecting that at some point between now and that point, there will be a levy renewal that will get us to this point. Instead of saying that this is where we are without a levy and hopefully, at some point, you will get one.
Sure.
So I guess I'm trying to get clarity on what that means.
It's probably more nuanced in my format. So as the board, as the last seven years, early on, we had taken off that reference altogether. We'd taken off the reference because the district cash reserves had been built back from 2012. And the district had a pretty healthy cash balance at a time where we could do some planning, the cash reserve policy. Prior to COVID, because of our deficit spent out in a few years fiscal, we decided to bring that in. Now, again, we are all continuing levies here. We have no renewals. But it is ODE's language to put there in case you start to discuss about levy. So what you don't see here is the next line below it. If we were to add in an operating levy, what would that look like? And that's the reporting format. So I don't mean to distract you with the renewal. There is nothing imminent, nothing planned, and nothing built into these assumptions other than probably for the foreseeable future, I can remove that reference.
Okay. Well, I'm not saying you need to remove it. I was just trying to get clarity and understand what it meant. The other, the other thing is, I just want to make notes since we're talking about it, that are we going in year eight or nine since our last levy?
We're at nine. We're heading into nine.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes.
So.
Our average, our average was about six. I think Mr. Bravo did that research early on. I was going back. Yeah. So on average, every six.
Since the 1970s without a levy, and this should, is year nine.
Yeah, that's, okay, that, I was just making sure. I thought that's what that was. And the only reason why I asked is just so that those in the community who are listening and paying close attention to this, based off what I'm gathering, we're in year nine. Based off that report, we may get to year 12 before needing to ask for levy. And part of my concern to Dr. Hall's point is waiting until that point as well. Is there so much education innovation that we could be also doing? And it takes a whole year to realize the money, once we even pass the levy.
That's correct.
And so knowing that we do have this opportunity with the ESR funds that runs out in 2024, I believe, right? Which is around the time when we start to deficit spend. I would like for this board and the Finance Committee to start looking at what might be the best estimated time for us to go so that we can not wait until 2024 and then have that discussion. Because as we learned last time, when it was imminent situation, there were so many other things that we needed to do around raising money, around building a campaign. there were so many other things that we needed to do around raising money, around building a campaign, and passing the two resolutions, getting the community and the business leaders on board. There was so much, that's almost a year process in of itself. So, I know how I felt. And again, it could have been because I was a new member on the board. But hearing all of that and knowing we had to consider that and rush, it was daunting. And I also think it's, we give an opportunity to educate our community too. So, hope I didn't soapbox.
Agreed. And if I might add, and as everyone on this board knows, there's so many things to consider when it comes time to talk about a levy. But we have been discussing that, I think, for the last couple of years now, just really trying to get that timing right. And also, understanding what it means since we've all been there. And recognizing that I really have only volunteered for two levy campaigns in the past 10 years. One failed and one didn't. But what it's like when that first one, if it does fail, when it fails, what that means for the district. And we all lived through that, where we were saying, there's no more meat to cut. We're into the bone at this point. So, I think that's a really important comment. And then, the other impact that we have, that will be changing, I think, our five-year forecast, you know, on an ongoing basis, is not only the ESTR funds, which Diana is going to talk about in just a moment, that I also want to make a comment about, but also the implementation of the Fair School Funding Plan over the next couple of years, which really is going to change, you know, what it means, you know, what our effective tax rate means and what we're bringing in from the state versus what we were bringing in locally. And so, of course, that's going to change in our five-year forecast. That may continue to get pushed out at least for a little bit. But there is a point at where it will no longer get pushed out. And that's the point where we got to finesse and figure out what that, where that line is, where we want to be on this side of it. And when it comes to the ESTR funds, which again, Diana is going to talk about, one thing that we spent a lot of time talking about at the finance committee is just being very mindful and thoughtful and intentional around programming. Because you're right, there's a lot of innovative educational programming that we can work with or things that have been on our collective wish lists for a very long time. And then, the challenge is striking that balance between bringing something new and bringing something that is new and sustainable. Because the last thing that any of us want to do is to bring some great early childhood education initiative to bear and then, a few years down the road, no longer be able to sustain it. So, I think that's going to be a lot of, we even talked about, this is the point where that those cross collaboration between committees and those joint committee meetings will be really key and strategic. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bravo. I definitely agree with that. We have Ms. Alexander and then Mrs. Mansfield.
I think I just want to make a comment. I think what we're listening to and what we're hearing, what Mr. Bravo's saying, I think the question that Dr. Akbar is saying, Mr. Pendleton, correct me if I'm wrong, what you're saying is with his updates, his regular updates, that will allow us to project even sooner. Instead of waiting down the road and saying, here's where we need a levy, that we'll start looking ahead and saying, okay, as we start using this money and we may start getting towards a deficit, here's where we need to start talking about possibly a levy. So, we're talking about it up here versus when we, before we were talking about it down the road here, closest we get to a levy. So, I think with his report outs, Mr. Pendleton, that is, his report outs, that we will be able to see and be able to project and know it'll help us, all of us. If we need to get to a point where it's time to get to a levy, we can all start gearing up, get our corporate partners and everyone else out there to help gear up for a levy. But it may seem like, just looking at the numbers, we may not have to do that until around 2025 unless something happens before then. And then, Mr. Pendleton should be able to tell us and say, hey, buckle down the hatches and let's go.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's fair.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that too, because I just wanted to make sure that what comes away from this is how well this board, this treasurer, the administration, how well we have done to keep this a lean, mean fighting machine, right? I mean, we are out there and we are doing the work. And we've managed to stretch the money that we are given way farther than we ever expected to. And I just also don't want that word, it's such a, it's such a word that creates such panic in the public. So, just saying it, I kind of, you know, it's like when my kids used to say a word they weren't supposed to say and they got put in the corner. That's what I feel like should happen when I hear that word. So, I just want to clarify, because this pandemic did not hit everyone equal. All right? So, I mean, we want to be really careful, I want to be really careful, I'll just own it, that we don't get prideful that we might go out farther, much farther than we ever imagined. But I also don't want people to panic because they hear that word and put us all in the corner.
Dr. Hall?
Yeah, I just had one last question. So, I asked this question a couple of months ago, Mr. Pendleton, and I think it was probably premature then, maybe premature, it may still be premature. But the question I asked a few months ago was, what were your thoughts around the possibility, from a budgetary standpoint, where the, where they would create sort of an offset and say, okay, listen, you know, districts got X number, they got X number of dollars from the federal government, so that gives us the license to say, okay, in this biennium, we're not, you know, as an example, Akron's going to get 95 million. So, we're going to tweak a formula. So, Akron gets 95 million less than they would have gotten from the state because they got $95 million from the federal government. Like, is that something that you think could happen? Or is, I guess, on a scale of one to 10, as far as 10 being very, very likely it's going to happen, one, absolutely not. Where would you put that?
10. I think that we have already reached out to OEA and OFT, all the education partners in Columbus, that it took us 30-plus years to get a patchwork of quilt funding and have an unconstitutional system. At the same time, districts have some relief and opportunity with ESTR funds. And as you see, especially from being in a virtual environment, our cash balance is growing a little bit. If we don't frame that as one voice in Ohio, there will absolutely be that thought that if school districts are flush with money, we won't need to fund the Fair School Funding Plan in years, the second two bienniums to fully phase it in. So, it has already been discussed from Senate leadership to me, prior to the House Bill 110 passing.
Yeah. I appreciate that, which makes the levy conversation even more critical to make sure that we're keeping people apprised, like, hey, like, this offset could happen and, you know. So, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I appreciate you indulging that question. And it kind of sparked something that I think is important to say, that Madam Superintendent kind of showed us, I want to say it was her first meeting, about how lean our operation has been to Mrs. Mansfield's point and how we've gotten leaner and leaner over the years. And I think we have a prime opportunity to tackle many things if we get our community's support. We have an opportunity to look at early childhood education and say, can we provide universal early childhood education in partnership with Community Action or some other organization? Can we also address, you know, something that's very important to me, which is making sure that everyone that works for our district gets a livable wage? Can we look and address that? Can we also look at our teachers' pay and pay them a little bit more closer to what they deserve? You know, those are, those are some prime opportunities that we have, you know. And to wait until we're deficit spending gives us, that takes those opportunities away. And so, I just want to, you know, as an individual board member, this is, we have not discussed this as a board, so I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. But I just want to put it out there that I would like to be a little more aggressive in having this conversation because I believe it's a prime opportunity in education and in our society to solve some of those problems that have plagued us for far too long, that actually create some of the inequities that we see within our system. So, thank you very much for indulging me in that. Next, we have committee reports, legal contracts and board policy. Mr. Alexander?
No report at this time, but we are scheduled to meet on September the 20th.
Thank you very much. Finance and Capital Management, Mr. Bravo and Miss Autry.
Yeah, we've pretty much had our committee report. Except that I want to see if you have anything before we mention those small items we didn't.
Yeah, I was just going to say that we probably exhausted a lot of what we discussed in our finance committee with Mr. Pendleton's report. The only other thing that I'd like to add, and I don't know if I didn't hear it, but one of the things that we discussed is a possible permanent improvement levy as well. So, that's just something to consider and think about. And just express an appreciation that Mr. Pendleton is going to be part of this Fair School Funding Plan Work Group as an analyst and a resource. We're privileged to have that in our favor moving forward. So, that's really going to assist us. And then, also, again, we've talked about the ESTR funds already. A lot of this, we've already touched upon. And just a reminder that they have to be spent by 2024. Funding can be spent on allowable prior year expenses. The district must consider the sustainability of the new initiatives that we might even be considering. And then, another thing that we did during finance committee is review the strategic plan that will hopefully serve as a template for all the other committees. So, if you guys haven't seen that yet, I believe it was sent out to everybody on the board already.
And we also reviewed our 2021 investment plan. And we took a look at our deferred comp plan for our employees. And we're looking at the OASBO 457B plan option that would offer employees yet one more opportunity for investment for retirement purposes. So, we'll keep the board posted on those as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the Finance and Capital Management Committee? Okay. Thank you very much. Sounds like I missed a very riveting committee meeting. We'll move to our personal favorite committee, Instructional Policy and Student Achievement. I love all the committees, by the way.
We know we're your favorite and we know that we have, we have pictures and things for you tonight. So, that's great. I know Val's going to talk, which one are we going to talk about? Okay, great. So, I just wanted to point out a couple of little things. One of the things I thought that was really fantastic about Family Resource Centers is the stuff, the Bus Supplies are going to be delivered by DoorDash. I love use of technology. Again, it's fantastic when we don't waste a perfectly good pandemic. There's some great information on the Get to School policy with our, our Get to School initiative with the Browns and the work that they're doing. Congratulations to them on winning. And then, the last thing that I wanted to point out, and then I'll turn it over, is the College and Career Academy schedule for information for parents is out. And I would encourage folks to take a look at that. A couple of those presentations right now are scheduled in person, but many of them are also virtual. So, take a look at those for families and parents to make sure that you're up to date on that coming. And I'll be quiet now.
Okay. The Elementary College and Career Academy's master planning team met for an all-day retreat. And their technical teams will be gathering feedback from families and stakeholder groups in order to create a presentation and a final recommendation to the executive committee. And we will keep you updated throughout the fall.
Yep. And just to add, I wanted to thank Kenya Harrington for his series on the school designations, which we wrapped up at our last instructional policy meeting with discussions around the voucher program. So, we just learned a little bit more about that, that there is also Ed Choice expansion that is taking place, that is going to, for families to meet the federal poverty guidelines is how they will be eligible for those Ed Choice voucher scholarships. It was a lot of overwhelming information, to be honest with you. And also, just learning that, you know, 30 of our schools are, allow this scholarship to be eligible. So, it's something that we can hopefully keep looking at and addressing moving forward to reverse that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Instructional Policy Committee and our staff? Okay. So, I just have one question and then one comment. One, I do want to say, I do appreciate these reports and especially the one with the pictures and seeing the young people in the fire suits. I love that. It also gives us an opportunity to kind of see what's happening. So, I do appreciate that. And then, also, the Family Resource Centers always give great reports and have great things happening. And I've said this before, but I don't think a lot of people know about what's going on. So, can we just have someone share about the stuff, the bus, whatever it's called, that campaign? And share more information about where, which students will get that opportunity? And then, when should they expect it?
We're in its fifth year with the United Way Summit Medina now. And we are going to target the three schools, Helen Arnold, Robinson, and Mickey Bright as the Family Resource Center sites, as well as eight additional elementary buildings that we're working through that process for as we speak. In the past, United Way has provided Stuff the Bus resources for our entire elementary school listing. But this year, due to some of the rollback and volunteer support and opportunities to collate items that are donated by companies, as well as the very aggressive Backpack Adventure that served 2,500 of our students. Last week, we are only going to be able to serve the 11 buildings this year with Stuff the Bus. And thankfully, United Way has this awesome partnership with DoorDash so that we don't have to bring our families into the building and risk any opportunities for exposure. Those supplies will be delivered directly to their homes at their doorstop, so.
Thank you very much. I thought that was cool. So. Yes. And so, thank you very much for that. Appreciate that. And we will now move to the Equity Committee.
Sure. I just want to ask, so are you sure you're done? You don't have more that you want to share? I mean, I just checking. Just checking, you know, because I could listen to you guys talk all day. I mean, you got some more? I mean, keep on going there. Okay. Clearly, we had to get our game up. Miss Cummins, come in. Let's try, let's try. Okay. Just wait for the next board meeting. I got something for you all at the next board meeting. Just see your staff, just so you know, I've got something for you all at the next board meeting. So, just equity. Okay. All right. Gotcha. Okay. So, yeah, so the overarching topic of discussion for the most recent Equity Committee meeting was the potential creation of a gender pronoun and chosen name policy. And so, as we sort of begin that process, those conversations, we began by really getting some feedback from REPS Pride ERG members on the topic. We had a chance to review with the help of Ms. Folk, Ms. Folk. I just did this. I meant to say, Ms. Folk. We reviewed and discussed sort of the current state as related to this topic, as it relates to APS employees and students. We also discussed the six or seven other districts that had policies on this going back to 1998. You know, so that was, that was a really great conversation as well. You know, so that was a really great conversation as well. And then we also talked about how the change in the federal administration, you know, has really impacted the types of policies that can be enacted at the individual school level, district levels in this space. So really, it's really kind of citing a change in direction from the Obama Administration to the Trump Administration, and now back to the Biden Administration. And one of the great things that came out of this was, you know, we discovered that we have an in-house expert on the topic, Dr. Eric Merkel, who provided a number of take-home materials, and also, I believe, sent out some items electronically to the board. You know, and so, and we also, you know, again, there was a lot that was packed in there, but we had a lot of conversation around the importance of terminology and some of the sociological and anthropological sort of issues around gender and human sexuality. And you see me referring to my notes here, because I also realize that I have a lot to learn in this topic as far as the vocabulary is concerned. I think when you're communicating in this area, it's hard to communicate when you don't know what the words are, and you don't know what words mean, right? And so, again, so as I look down at my notes, I'm realizing there's still a whole lot I have to learn about this topic as well, in that there's a lot more that can be done to support gender and sexually diverse culture, both in this community as well as in this organization. And so as some potential next steps, we talked about first, you know, getting the board up to speed on this topic by providing additional materials, educational materials, and then moving forward with planning a board-level training around this topic, where we really kind of, and we're sort of discussing about how that would look like. Would it be a 101, and then a part two, that would be a 201? That would really kind of include, you know, terminology and, you know, key definitions and kind of policy considerations, you know, that we should be thinking about, sort of what does the literature look like? What is and what isn't permissible from a legal standpoint as well? And then a number, and then some pre-reading, pre-slides, you know, as well, that could be a part of that. So, anyway, so that was where we sort of concluded things. And, but I'll pause there. I'll go ask Mr. Alexander, my co-chair, you know, did I miss anything? Leave anything out?
He did a really good job.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
You guys got a lot coming.
That's right.
Get ready, get ready, get ready. And we also talked about one other thing, maybe join meetings and the policy committee, so.
Oh, that's right.
And Mrs. Folk, please help me, she's gonna kill me. Was at the meeting as well, Dr. Merkel.
Oh, Hachikis?
Oh, it was Ms. Hachikis.
Ms. Hachikis, yeah.
Was there also, so I want to make sure, we made sure she was, mentioned her name, and she was there, and she gave some information as well during the meeting. But other than that.
Roger that, Roger that. Now, how was that? How was that? That was pretty awesome, may I tell you? Pretty good. Get your popcorn ready.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Hall or Mr. Alexander? Okay, hearing seen none, we'll move to Communication Ad-Hoc Committee. Ms. Autry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, as you know, that report is forthcoming and will be presented at a future meeting. It is in the hands of our president. And I just wanted to thank Joanne Isaac and Mr. Williamson for all of their hard work on helping put that together. So I'm looking forward to being able to share that information with the board at a future meeting.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work leading this ad hoc committee. And we do look forward to providing that to the full board and having a discussion about it at our next board meeting. Any questions about the Communication Ad-Hoc Committee report? Okay, hearing none. I want to give one final opportunity. Is there anyone else who joined us today who would like to address the board? Hearing none. We will, I'll actually turn it to Madam Superintendent to share with us some information about how we're welcoming our parents and families back.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. I failed to mention during the Superintendent's Report that we are attempting to be great listeners and to provide our families with many more ways to be reminded about how it is that they can engage with the school community. So one such example, I'm holding up a card here, because not only is APS proud, but we're also prepared to start this year. So this card says APS Prepared. And our team, Director of Elementary Ed and Secondary Ed, but Mary Outley Kelly had shared with me these cards that we created that we're handing out to families to describe some steps that they can take to prepare for the year. Things like logging on to, helping their child log on to their Chromebook, joining the Google Classroom, and connecting in to the resources in which to learn. But it's also a visual, so there are steps for our students, but visuals for our families that they can just keep handy to be reminded. And then as they get their child's login information, they can also add those to a place on the card. But our staff who translates information, these are translated, you'll see, in multiple languages. So they're available in, not only in English, but in really Swahili, Nepali, Spanish, Burmese. You know, so we have them, they turn these around very quickly as we continue to call the question about how it is we might prepare families to have information at their fingertips and to also know how to stay engaged. So while we do, we already talked about the websites that have been built out with an array of information, but also, these are visual examples of reminders. So kudos to Mary, Joanne Isaacs, and, you know, full team for all you're doing to continually think about how it is we can support our families.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Madam Superintendent? Okay, hearing none. We have no unfinished business nor new business, but we do have a need to recess into executive session. Are there any other comments that board members want to make before we do that? Okay, hearing none. Just wanted to let everyone know that there will not be a need to vote on any items when we return. So we will be recessing into executive session and coming back to just adjourn. So just wanted to let everyone know that. So pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, for the purposes of considering the employment of a public employee or official of the school district, we will entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Bravo and seconded by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Mr. Pendleton, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McHittick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We stand in recess.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
Don't move.
(laughing)
Hello everyone and welcome back to the regularly scheduled board meeting of 23 August 2021. We've just returned from recess of executive session and there is no other business to come before the board. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Alexander and seconded by Mr. Bravo. We now stand in adjournment at 8:44. Thank you and see you everybody in three weeks.